Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council for Tuesday, December 12, 2006. At this time, as the clerk calls this meeting to order, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is one of those fun occasions. We're moving into our reorganization this evening, and we're moving into a time when we've had an extremely successful year, so thank you all for coming. I'd like to, at this time, acknowledge our former council members and former planning commissions who are present this evening, and if, when I call you, if you'd stand to be recognized, we'd sure appreciate it. First of all, a former council member, former mayor, and now Ventura County Supervisor, Lynda Parks. Lynda, where are you? Frances, Frances Prince, former council member, former mayor. Probably one of the pedestals of the community that will always be known for the man who doubled up on Halloween, former mayor Ray Garcia. And also, former planning commissioner, former council member, and former mayor Judy Lazar. With us, a current member of the City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission, Darrell Reynolds. Also with us this evening, we have a number of our partner members. There are a number of public agencies that operate within this community. Unlike some of the major eastern cities, we don't have one city that handles it all by themselves. The water districts, the special districts, the partnerships go on and on to try and maintain the quality of life that we all enjoy in this community. And there are two organizations that have a particular amount of interface with the city council to move successfully through this governance process. One of them, the Canal Recreation and Park District. And at this time, CRPD, Mike Berger, Joe Gibson, George Lang, Susan Holt. Would you please now? And with CRPD, the newest, one of the newest members of their senior management group, former deputy city attorney and former assistant city manager, the new general manager of the Canal Recreation and Park District, Jim Friedel. And also, it would be remiss if we didn't mention the man that oversaw the Canal Recreation and Park District from its infancy for 36, 38 years, and is now general manager emeritus, and we'll be talking with him a little bit more later on in the program, is Tex Ward. Joining us this evening from the Thousand Oaks Westlake Regional Chamber of Commerce, Janet Levitt. Janet? There you are. And joining Janet this evening is the chairman of the board of the Thousand Oaks Westlake Regional Chamber of Commerce, John Dawkins. It's good to see you, John, and know that you're staying active even though you are now a retiree on a fixed income. With us this evening, in the Alliance for the Arts, the executive director and president, Patricia Jones. Patricia? Now, I hope I haven't missed anyone. That's the risk in doing this, of our former elected folks and some of our close partners, but just about everybody in this room is a close partner with this organization, so to all of you, thank you for coming. I also want to acknowledge the members of our city committees, commissions, boards, and attendants tonight. Would all of you who serve in that capacity and serve our residents, please stand to Thank you all. I'm not trying, by the way, to do my Barry Madeloe impression this evening. I'm chasing a little throat thing, and it sounds a lot worse than it really is, so... Okay, at this time, we're going to have the Forum Theater seat dedications. Each year, the city council dedicates a seat in the Janet and Ray Shear Forum Theater to a citizen who has contributed outstanding service to the community. This year, the council is pleased to have two honorees, and I think at this point, I'll Our two honorees this evening, the first honoree, Tex Ward. Tex Ward is a longtime resident of the City of Thousand Oaks. He has been and continues to be one of the city's most instrumental innovators responsible for the superb recreation and park services we have in the community today. After 38 years with the Canal Recreation and Park District, he retired earlier this year with the honor of general manager emeritus. This marked the end of a significant era in which CRPD grew into one of the premier recreation and park districts in the state. Texas made significant contributions to our city and our total community. It was Texas' brainchild to form a joint powers agency between the City of Thousand Oaks and the Canal Recreation and Park District to focus on open space acquisition and management in the Canal Valley. COSCA and the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority are only two of the many significant partnerships he is credited with establishing for the purpose of protecting and managing open space. Some of the major open space projects in which Tex played a key role include Wildwood Park, the Hope Nature Preserve, McCray Wildlife Preserve, Wildwood Mesa, Potrero Ranch, and McCray Ranch. He is also instrumental in helping secure 184 acres of Canal Creek Parkland. Tex said, this was a quote, "We wouldn't have done what we've done without a very supportive community." And Tex, we wouldn't have done it without you. We thank you for the many, many years of service and the many contributions to our community. Tex, thank you.
Say something. Whatever.
Well, you know, the best thing they did was gave me L-23. That's Lancers 23. Both of my sons were Lancers number 23. I don't know how they did that, but, you know, thank you very much. This is a great honor. The success of Canal Recreation and Park District is tied hand in hand with our partnerships Denny mentioned. The city has been an excellent partner. We've had a relationship that has produced synergy, has produced an outstanding system. It isn't just me, but a marvelous staff, people that have stuck around and are dedicated to this community, and those are the people that should be thanked. And I, for one, want to salute them and salute the city council, the former city council members, and wish Jim well and the board well. You know, things are on a good course, and we appreciate the relationship we have with the city.
As former Lancer 22, I'll continue. Our next honoree is Bob Records. Bob Records is also a longtime Canal Valley resident and was a City of Thousand Oaks employee for over 15 years. He was formally recognized at the 40th Annual La Festa del Triunfo and bestowed the honor of Don Triunfo. In 1985, he was Canal Valley Day's Grand Marshal with the nickname Buffalo Bob. He has been active in supporting many organizations throughout the years. Among organizations for which he has volunteered are the Thousand Oaks Kiwanis Club, Community Consciousness Under One Roof, Sir Optimus International, Many Mansions, Manic Canal Valley Food Bank, and Zonta. He delivers food through Meals on Wheels and participates in a multitude of community service projects each year. Bob is also well-known as a noted western artist and painter. He has spent over 23 years capturing the historic two-year-plus journey of the Lewis and Clark Expedition from St. Louis to the west coast in a monumental series of 84 paintings. As a community volunteer and artist, Bob is an advocate and role model for the citizenry of our city residents represent. He has said, "It is my hope to not only inspire people with my work, but to also educate folks on this incredible journey." And Bob, you have indeed. Bob, we thank you for the many, many years of service you have contributed to our community.
Mayor Gillette, and members of the council, it's been a long time since I've been here talking, having been on the other end of the mic, but I want to thank all of you for this award. But I think it's kind of neat to be with the guy that was just before you, before me. And Tex and I, we go back a long time, and it's really a pleasure to be associated with a person like that. I want to thank all of you, and I want to thank my family. Thank you.
On behalf of the council, it's my honor to preside over the special presentations to our outgoing mayor, council member, and mayor Dennis Gillette. And to start the presentations, I'd like to ask council member Tom Clancy to present the California Senate Resolution to our mayor Dennis Gillette.
Oh. Denny, I want to present this California Senate Resolution commending you on behalf of the honorable Tom McClintock, 19th Senatorial District. Tom was, unfortunately, couldn't attend tonight. And rather than read a dozen wherashes, which will take us all night, I just want to present this and say this is very well-deserved.
Dennis, you've got a lot to say, so...
It says right here in the small print, "And I promise I will help you get legislation through to control the speed limit on Lynn Road." Right there, I see it.
Well done.
I can take this with me.
Our next presentation from the California Assembly is council member Jackie Irwin.
I am presenting this on behalf of Assemblywoman Audra Strickland, who couldn't be here tonight. And since there are not half a dozen wherashes, I will read to you what she has to say. "In honor of your dedication and service to the citizens of Thousand Oaks while serving as mayor 2005 through 2006, thank you." And that's from Assemblywoman Audra Strickland.
From the Board of Supervisors, the chair of the board, council member, and former mayor, Supervisor Lynda Parks.
Well, this just has four wherashes, so I'll go ahead and read them. This is a resolution by the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County recognizing Mayor Dennis Gillette for his service to the people of Thousand Oaks. And whereas Dennis Gillette began his time of service as the mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks on the 10th of December in the year 2005 for the second time in his esteemed career, and continued in this capacity until December 12, 2006. And whereas, under his leadership, the people of the City of Thousand Oaks benefited from Mayor Gillette's diligence and regular participation in city council discussions, as well as from his role participating in the business of government with local agencies, citizens' groups, as well as other municipalities and government entities. And whereas, the City of Thousand Oaks shall continue to prosper as one of the most desirable cities in the nation, to the extent that addressing the needs of ordinary residents and serving the common good are the basis for city leaders' work to uphold the highest standards in public policy decision-making. And whereas Mayor Dennis Gillette has contributed to helping the city council in its mission to serve the people of Thousand Oaks, now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in commending Mayor Dennis Gillette. And I note it's got five signatures, and it'll probably be the last one that Judy Michaels has, because she's leaving office too, leaving office, so congratulations to you. Good year. Hope you feel better.
Our next presentation is from Nick Kidway from Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Nick, good evening.
What? Allowed to give speeches or not really?
Now's the time, Buster.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway.
You have three minutes.
No... Well, Rabbi was here last night, and I watched him at home, and he said that he didn't want his congruence to know that he was under the time thing, because he would be out of a job if he had to speak for five minutes even. And so, I just want to congratulate the mayor and everybody who ran in the last campaign. I could also have given a plaque, even myself, who is not that involved. I have so many plaques that my wife doesn't allow me to put them behind just boxes, so I decided to just give something practical. And I christened myself Nick in 1971. My name is Egbal, and on the spur of the moment, I chose Nick. And I did not really know that Nick also was what we grew up with as father's cross or Santa Claus. And so, that's why it kind of comes naturally to give gifts, and so I have a few things that are practical, and I hope the mayor will enjoy them. And I thank all the people that participated in the election. As somebody who's involved with Concerned Citizens, I think it's a special privilege for elected officials to be recognized by the citizens, because after all, that's what democracy and what service to the community is all about. It's great to be recognized by senators and elected people. I was very disappointed that only 40% of the people voted in the last election, and we don't even have a lot of people that are not even registered. And I meet a lot of people because of the TO TV that like what I do, and I talk to them, and especially people with accents, and I'm surprised how many of them are not even citizens, and how many refuse to participate. But folks, I mean, this is not a spectator sport. And I know the first step is very difficult, Mayor, to come before the podium, but after that, you should come once in a while, not every week like I do, but come once in a while and participate, because we all owe it to the community to give something back. Thank you very much, Mayor, and hope your next four years is going to be as wonderful as the last four.
Our next presentation is John Dawkins, the board chair of the Thousand Oaks Westlake Chamber of Commerce. John's got some help.
Indeed, I do. Thank you, Andy. Mayor Gillette, I am joined here at the podium by Janet Levitt and Jan Smith. Janet is the president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and Jan is the Director of Governmental Relations, and we all wanted to come down, because everybody associated with the chamber just is in your debt and thanks the world of you and all of the countless hours that you've given to the chamber and chamber events and chamber activities over the years. Most of you probably know that a number of years ago, Mayor Gillette was, in fact, the chairman of the board of the Chamber of Commerce, and those of us that have had the honor of following in your footsteps are just trying to live up to the example that you set. And this past year, you've been particularly generous in your time and in your willingness to provide whatever assistance you can to the chamber, and it has done much toward making the chamber a better chamber, and we are just as happy as we can be to count you among our friend. And I would like to just briefly read what it says here on the plaque on the clock that we would like to present to you. It says, "The Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Regional Chamber of Commerce to Mayor Dennis Gillette in honor of your outstanding leadership as mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks 2006," and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation is a special person in the community, and I say that because there are any number of people that have contributed so greatly to Thousand Oaks. But this next lady truly has exemplified in so many ways, some of it with class, professionalism, dedication, and clearly has contributed to the Thousand Oaks that all of us, longtime residents and newcomers have come to appreciate. I'd like to introduce former mayor and council member Frances Prince.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Andy Fox, and I hope that we have this on record so that I can copy it down and give it to other people to make as an introduction for me in the future. It was great. Thanks a lot.
I read it just exactly like you told me to.
I wanted to start by saying thank you very much to all of you for the work and the effort that you give on behalf of the citizens of Thousand Oaks. No matter how many times you say thank you to people who serve in public office, it's really not possible to say it enough, because you give so much of yourself in so many different ways. So congratulations on reelection, and thank you for what you do. This evening, I would like to give this recognition to Mayor Dennis Gillette. It has no wherashes, I am going to read it, "In recognition of the outstanding support given by Dennis Gillette, mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, for the rebuilding together Ventura County Fall 2006 Home Rehabilitation Effort in Newbury Park, California. Sir Winston Churchill said it very succinctly, 'We make a living by what we get; we make a life by what we give.'" And Dennis, I have known you for many, many years in a lot of different capacities, sheriff of the substation, the commander of out at East Valley Substation, working at Cal Lutheran, and working as a council member for the City of Thousand Oaks. And you give of yourself in so many different ways. You listen carefully, and you respond to your constituents. And it's really not possible to say thank you enough, but thank you very much for what you did for rebuilding together in the fall and for everything else that you do.
I knew there was a good reason when I decided not to give her that speeding ticket that time.
Our next presenter is a gentleman who, if you're involved with Thousand Oaks Little League, you certainly know this gentleman well. He also was a candidate for the school board, and let me just share with the community that if half the community had the enthusiasm that this gentleman brings to literally everything he does, we would be even better than the community that we are. And so, it's my pleasure to introduce John Short.
You did read it exactly how I wrote it. Thanks. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'd like to first congratulate council member Fox, Gillette, and Bill Lopena on the recent successes of being reelected. I'd also like to wish the entire city council a joyful and happy holiday season. In addition, I'd also like to recognize councilman Fox, as he becomes the new mayor for 2007. Good luck and continued success on taking this city from great to even greater. In preparing the presentation this evening, I visited Mayor Gillette's website and noticed a glaring mistake on your website. In the message to Denny, Mayor Gillette, you were quoted as saying, "What started out as a blank slate 42 years ago has become one of the most desirable cities in the country, and I am proud to be a small part of making this happen. I would like to continue serving this community for many years to come." The mistake is obvious for those who knew Mayor Gillette. Mayor, you are a man that has served this community since 1963, as a sheriff, corporate treasurer for Cal Lutheran, member of the Canal Recreation Park District, and a city council member since 1998. You have been involved in dozens of organizations within our community. Over the past 43 years of public service to this community, you have not been a small part of this great community, but rather one of the largest contributors to making this city a great place for us all to live. I'd also personally like to thank your family for being so understanding and supportive over the past 43 years of your public service that you have... over the past forty-three years of your public service that you have given to this community with passion and conviction. You are a true inspiration to everyone you come in contact with. The community also appreciates all the years of public service as witnessed in the recent reelection for four more years as City Council. Since you are a big supporter of the youth sports, especially Thousand Oaks Little League, I'd like to present to you on behalf of the league and Mr. Baseball himself, Sparky Anderson, an autographed picture of you, Sparky, and the 2006 Big League World Series Champions.
If you come to the Civic Arts Plaza, then you certainly come to the Performing Arts Center, both here in the council chambers and in the bigger theater. And a big part of that is the Alliance for the Arts. And here tonight to make a presentation to Mayor Gillette is the Alliance for the Arts Executive Director, Patricia Moore Jones.
On behalf of the Board of Directors, I wanted to congratulate you, Andy, and Claudia, and of course you, Denny, on your reelection. I especially want to thank you, Denny. Do you want to stand over here? I don't have to keep my back. There we go. I want to especially thank you, Denny, for everything you've done for the Alliance for the Arts and for the City of Thousand Oaks. You're like the ultimate cheerleader for the city. That's why he lost his voice. That happens when you're a cheerleader in the lead. But you were really everywhere for the Alliance. You attended a lot of our events, did many commendations at very special occasions with our distinguished speaker series, attended our gala and greeted our guests very eloquently, and attended the Arts Festival and the Fun Run. And we really, really appreciate how ubiquitous you have been, you know, for the Alliance and the City of Thousand Oaks. So, we have a gift for you, and I want to read the inscription. It has no whereas's on it, but it's a marble trophy and its mountains to represent the Caneo Valley. And it says, "Denny Gillette, Mayor, 2006, climbing every mountain top for Thousand Oaks with sincere appreciation, Alliance for the Arts."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's beautiful.
I have a rose for you and also for all of our council members because we really do appreciate our wonderful partnership that we have with the City Council. Without us working so close together, we would not be as successful as we are. So, we really appreciate that, and I'd like to give those to you now.
we're going to hear more about the partnership between the Park District and the city. But we have Mr. Joe Gibson, who is Director of Recreation and Park District. Joe?
We don't have a presentation tonight, Dennis. The whereas's and the what-fours, and the fact that you're on three or four fixed incomes, we didn't want to burden you with carrying a lot of stuff home. But we felt appropriate, and we asked to be on this point of the agenda because as an alumnus of the Park District, we feel you are the epitome of really what public service is all about. You're ten years on the Park District. You're eight years here, four more years to come, plus all the time you served as a deputy sheriff and the other things you've done for the community. We wanted to come up and really say thank you. Thank you for being the person you are, setting the standards that you set in making the Caneo Valley, the Caneo Valley, and the City of Thousand Oaks a great place. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Joe.
Not an unfamiliar picture for Mayor Gillette. For those of you that are new to the community, before Mayor Gillette was on the City Council, he served a number of years on the Recreation and Park District and had a key role in the quality of the parks that we have in our community. Our final speaker is Mr. Rick Lemo.
I thought I was speaking someplace else, like in public comments or something. I have no presentation at all. What I really wanted to do was congratulate you on behalf of a ton of involved community members who can't always make it down here, to thank you for what you do and to let you know that one of the casualties of so much public service is that sometimes people take you for granted. But when you listen to what citizens say behind your back, they really don't take you for granted. They appreciate what you do and what Terry has had to sacrifice or enjoy, depending which way you look at it, with you being out of the house. So, on behalf of all of us, thank you very much. Job well done.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Does anybody else out there want to send their best wishes on to Dennis before we bring him back? Well, Mayor Gillette has taken a seat. The final presentation is my honor to present. And let me just share a few things about Dennis Gillette that I think, as I look through the audience today, I think a lot of people know. But it's my hope that folks that are viewing tonight may be introduced to a man that they may not know a lot about. Dennis Gillette has served our community for the better part of four decades. Let me just say that again. The better part of four decades. I'll reveal a personal issue here. I'm forty-eight years old. So, I just want to put that perspective for, on a personal note, how much respect I have for somebody like Dennis Gillette. And he has served our community in a number of capacities. First, I think, after, certainly after election, most folks are aware that, you know, my professional life is in public safety as a firefighter for the city of Los Angeles. Dennis served his professional life as a sheriff for Ventura County. In a very real way, Dennis put his life on the line for the folks of Thousand Oaks for several years, literally. After his retirement, he served for a number of years in an executive capacity at Cal Lutheran University. And it's because of Dennis's leadership and his commitment to the community that we have such a world-class college/university here in Thousand Oaks, the first four-year university in Ventura County. And Dennis played an integral part in the development of that community. As has been mentioned before, Dennis served in our community in the Caneo Recreation and Park District for, I believe, two terms? Three terms? All right, close to three terms. And then stepped up when asked, when asked, to serve on our City Council, and most recently was reelected to his third term. So, Dennis Gillette has committed his life, literally, and devoted his life, literally, to the City of Thousand Oaks. He is, without question, today, the historian on this City Council for this community. And I need everybody in this community to know that if we're looking at why things happened and how things happened, Dennis Gillette is the man. And I want folks to understand, coming off a campaign, Dennis Gillette is the real deal. He serves because he cares. And so, Dennis, finally, I want to, on behalf of the entire City Council, thank you and your family for your commitment. I think a lot of folks maybe forget at times that serving on this City Council is really community service, and it doesn't come without sacrifice. Yes, we put our names on the ballot. Yes, we work hard to get elected. But our families clearly sacrifice. And Dennis, like many others in the communities, during the last four years and his time in the council, has endured family hardships, personal hardships, like every one of us. But he showed up every Tuesday. He has served our community in an outstanding manner as mayor. And Dennis, it's my privilege to serve you, this title, on behalf of the City Council as a token of our appreciation for your outstanding service in this year as Mayor of Thousand Oaks. Dennis, thanks very much. All right, let me allow our council members, fellow council members, to make their comments about Mayor Gillette. And I'll start with Councilmember Tom Glancy.
Thank you, Andy. Being a man of relatively few words, as you can tell from my senatorial presentation, Denny, I want to thank you for your year as mayor. You did, I thought, a stellar job. Our meetings were well-run. They were very fairly run, and we accomplished an awful lot, as is proven by your State of the City message. We did a lot, and you certainly helped push us there. I think what's more amazing, though, and more impressive to me, is the number of events within our community that you attended representing our city. You set a standard that can be emulated, but it can't be matched. You did an awesome job. Our citizens really appreciate it. I really appreciate it, and I want to say thank you very much.
Councilmember Bill De La Penia.
Thank you. I don't know how you can top the wonderful presentation that Councilmember Fox just made, and along with Councilmember Glancy. What impresses me the most is not only your invaluable experience and leadership over the past four decades or so, but also the, as Dr. Glancy stated, amount of events, the number of events that you have attended. It shows that you have a true commitment to the community because I don't know of any other council member, with all due respect to my other colleagues, I don't know of any other council member who has attended as many community events or events representing the city as you have. And that shows a true dedication to the community, and I congratulate you on a wonderful year as mayor.
Councilmember Jackie Irwin.
Yeah, with this group, it's always difficult going last. But I would, so I will be a little bit repetitive, but I want to commend you also for an outstanding year. First, with running the meetings, you always were very fair and unbiased, and when things were heated, you were, you always maintained decorum, and that's what the public sees, and we certainly appreciate that. And I also want to echo what everybody else said, that you did an excellent job of attending all the community events, every weekend, the Boy Scout Eagle ceremonies. And I think you, I don't know if you missed any this year. Really, I think that will be a very hard record to match. Your background with the Sheriff's Department, with CLU, with the Park District, your work on the sanitation board and transportation committee, you're representing the city on national committees and state committees, has been really invaluable to the city and to its residents. But on a personal note, I want to say I really appreciate your willingness to pass that information on to me, to all the time you've spent educating me. That's very difficult information to pick up, and you have really, you know, I've really appreciate, appreciated your willingness to pass it on. And I think a lot of it is that you want, after you leave, to make sure that we understand the background of things. As Mr. Fox said, you're a great historian. So, thank you for your, it's really lifelong dedication to this city, and thank you for your excellent year as mayor.
Thank you very much.
Finally, I think it's appropriate to hear from the City Executive Officer, City Manager, Scott Minnick. Scott?
Mr. Mayor. Careful. I'm not elected. I'll say very nice things. On behalf of the executive team, the department managers, and the six hundred and fifty employees who work for you and for the council, it has been both an honor and a pleasure to work for you and for the full council. And Dennis, we really do, and I really do, appreciate your guidance, your vision, leadership, and patience with us. And it was a challenging year, and at times it was stressful. But we came through it in flying colors and largely due to your leadership, and I appreciate your willingness to listen to different options along the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Before I give Dennis a chance to make his remarks, are there any, I think I had one card for public comment, and that was former Mayor Councilmember Judy Lazar. So, Judy, do you want to make your comments now? Or, okay. And then anybody else that wanted to make comments specifically about Mayor Gillette and his term as mayor, now would be the time. Just go ahead and take the seat behind Judy.
But I do have a sincere thank you from everyone in the city and everyone that I run into, and I do run into a lot of people. They do appreciate the work that is done by the mayor, by the City Council. But Dennis, my thanks to you and the community's thanks to you. On a broader note, I really wanted to make a personal comment to the council. Congratulations to Claudia and Andy and Dennis on your reelection. And I think this is the first time in the last probably fifteen years that all the incumbents have been reelected. I think that's a mark of satisfaction on the part of the community. They like what they see. They like the job that's being done. There are, you know, if you look around tonight, I don't think you're going to hear a lot of angry comments, and that's something that we've had before. This council has been able to work together, and I think that's a really positive thing for the community, and it's been reflected in the results of the election. So, congratulations to all of you. And to all five of you, I hope you have another wonderful year. And just a quick personal thanks to, and congratulations to Bob Rickards and Tex Ward. You've made an excellent choice in your seating designations this year. Thank you.
It's now my honor to turn this over to our mayor, Mayor Dennis Gillette.
Thank you very much, Andy. I had, I had the opportunity and the honor last week to deliver the State of the City address to about two hundred and sixty people up at Las Robles Greens Golf Course. And in the time taken to prepare that State of the City presentation, you gave me the opportunity to look thoroughly, look at all aspects of this city. And for those of us that deal with it day in and day out, we know it. I hope most of you know it, and I hope that the residents that are watching this know it. This is truly a world-class city. And it didn't get that way by accident. A lot of people in the, over the last forty-three years have committed their time, effort, energies, and skills to making this the kind of community that we all want to live in and we all want to be part of. I, I'm going to keep my remarks very short, but I do want to acknowledge a couple of people that came in and are, have been part of that, of that palette that has... people that came in and are, have been part of that, of that palette that has, has painted this picture that we all, all enjoy here in Thousand Oaks. Former councilmember, longtime friend Chuck Cohen is here. Chuck? And I also noticed Bob Lewis came in. Bob? And one more person who has probably what I consider one of the toughest jobs in this city, a planning commissioner, Tina Grumney. Tina? Now, that being said, this is not a one-way street, and I've had a lot of fun. I truly have. It's, it's such a great city, and such a great institution. Jim, I didn't see you up there. Former mayor, councilmember, and longtime friend from the city of Ventura, Jim Monahan. Hi, Jim. I've had a lot of enjoyment, and it came with, it came with some, some decisions that had to be made, commitments that had to be made, but a tremendous amount of support that has to be given to me in a lot of areas, and that comes from my bride of 38 years and my best friend, Terry. Terry? Scott referenced the employee base of the city, the 650 employees of this city. This city is, during its relatively short time, has been so blessed with its employee workforce. Everyone, and the administrative staff, from the city manager and the city attorney, all the way through the workforce, to, one, the man that I see every morning when I come into City Hall, who takes care of all of the flowers and everything up around the turnaround, always with a smile on his face, and always, "How are you today?", and, but that's replicated through the whole city, and a commitment to serve the residents of this city. We couldn't do it without him. We try to take care of him, but they certainly believe in their mission and their role in serving the residents of this city. And I think that, in large part, has contributed to what just happened in the local election. As all of you talk to people, and their concern about what's going on on the international scene, and their concern about the trials and tribulations at the federal level, and concern and apprehension at the state level, many, many, many of our residents look for their stability in government here at the local level. There are five of us, there isn't one. This is a partnership among the five of us. We, we often have different opinions on how things should be pursued. We bring our skill sets, our experience, our knowledge, our insight, and we try to blend that all together to do the best thing that we can to serve the 127,000 residents of this city. And I think the electorate looked at that, and they considered the ultimate test, that we're doing a pretty good job with it, and that, in fact, is the reason why three of us were, three incumbents were returned to the council. Supported by a superb staff, the city now looks and moves forward. I am absolutely honored, after this many years in the community, to come forward and have the opportunity to serve this city as its mayor. We'll pass the gauntlet on happily and have every reason to believe that the prognosis is overwhelmingly positive, and, as Alex Fiori used to say, "The best is yet to come." Thank you all very much for coming down this evening. We really, I really appreciate it. At this time, would the clerk please call Item 6, the Public Comments Section?
Mayor and councilmembers, we only have one public speaker tonight, and they're allowed three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway.
Honorable Mayor, City Council. I have just one public comment and then a couple of presentations, I guess. We've been reading about Caneo Valley days, and you and Dr. Clancy and others are well aware of it, the parade. And it's true that the city has never financially supported the parade, but the city is very generous in supporting many activities in this community, otherwise we would not be so special, just like I've been on the Social Services Funding Committee, and we give over $125,000 every year. We gave about $50,000 to special events. The city is subsidizing the theater, according to some, to the tune of half a million dollars every year. And so, I don't really see why nobody on this council has come forward to say that $20,000, $30,000, something like, it's such a paltry sum, and there's such a support for the, the parade. I'm not involved with it, I don't even go, my kids are, but there's a, there's a need in this community, and it makes us special, so I hope that the council would look up under that. I had no really horse in the race, and I also predicted that all nine council, all nine incumbents would come, so I was lucky to have called the races out correctly, because I was not involved in any race. It's great that Mayor Lazar is here, and I remember four years ago, she made the comment that Andy Fox came out first at that time also, and there was so much commotion about other things that it completely got forgot, that he ran such a great campaign and came out number one. And so, I don't know, the council doesn't really formally have presentations for other people, but I mean, it's wonderful and great that there were so many candidates. I mean, Simi Valley, which is, we compete with all the time, had no people that came forward to run. I mean, if you don't have elections, if you don't have candidates, if you don't have public speakers, you don't have America. And so, I want to congratulate the Honorable Claudia de La Penia, and also Mayor Pro Tem Andy Fox, for a great campaign that you folks ran. I wish you folks the best of luck, and this comes from a lot of the citizens also, that do not come to the council meetings, and they really appreciate what you're doing. So, not to be partisan, I would like to present similar gifts. I hope you enjoy them, and I wish the council the best for the holidays.
Thank you. At this time, would the city clerk please provide the recent election report?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. You have before you a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election held on November 7, 2006. The county clerk has certified the canvas of votes cast for three offices of member of the city council for the City of Thousand Oaks General Municipal Election. It is recommended city council adopt the resolution certifying the election of Andrew Andy Fox, Claudia de La Penia, and Dennis C. Gillette for the term of four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Council discussion. Motion? Mrs. de La Penia?
The motion would be to approve the Thousand Oaks General Municipal Election Certification Resolution.
Thank you. I have a motion for adoption. Comment to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
At this time, would the city clerk please administer the oath of office to our reelected councilmembers?
Thank you, Mayor Gillette. Joining me tonight to give the oath is our city clerk emeritus Nancy Dillon. Will Councilmembers Fox, Bill de La Penia, and Gillette please join us at the podium? Could you please raise your right hand and repeat the oath? I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll have to work through it. Item 9, now is the time for the 2006 council reorganization. Will the city clerk please open nominations?
Nominations are now in order and open for the office of mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, city clerk. Dr. Clancy?
Thank both of you. It is my pleasure to nominate Councilmember Andy Fox to serve as mayor for next year. Andy has served with distinction as city councilman for the last 12 years. One doesn't have to say a lot about his qualifications, they're absolutely immense. I will say from a personal that I've been amazed, absolutely amazed, at his composure, and his ability to focus on what's important and what's germane. Therefore, I, my pleasure to nominate Andy.
Thank you.
Andy Fox has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? There be, be no further nominations for mayor. Nominations are declared closed.
That mine? By, by acclamation, the city council has selected Andy Fox as the mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks until December 2007. Congratulations, Andy.
Nominations are now open for the selection of Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Bill de La Penia.
It is my pleasure to nominate Councilwoman Jackie Irwin to the position of Mayor Pro Tem.
We have a nomination of Councilmember Jackie Irwin for Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing none, the nominations are closed, and by acclamation, Councilmember Jackie Irwin will serve as Mayor Pro Tem. It's the time in the agenda where the incoming mayor has an opportunity to make some comments, and I'll try to make them as brief as possible. First, I want to thank all the former councilmembers and mayors that have served our city. As I've stated many times in the past, we have a world-class community, and it didn't happen by accident. It has been the thousands of hours that have been put in by citizen representatives, citizen volunteers, all had full-time jobs, all had families, who have devoted an enormous amount of their time and their efforts to making Thousand Oaks the community that we have. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention two people. First, he's here tonight, and in a very real way, he's the reason I'm sitting in this seat tonight. Back in 1990, I applied for a planning commission position, and Councilmember and former mayor Bob Lewis took a leap of faith. And I say it every four years, and I hope I am able to say it in, in other four years, that had it not been for Bob's vision and his leadership and his willing to take a risk on a 32-year-old kid that he didn't know putting on the planning commission, I'm certain I wouldn't be here today. And so, it would be absolutely appropriate that I thank and recognize Bob Lewis for giving me the opportunity to serve this community. Bob, thank you very much. The other former councilmember, and, and I, I know that the former councilmembers know that I have tremendous respect for all of them, but this gentleman needs to always be recognized, and he truly is the father of Thousand Oaks. I made the motion that we would adjourn every year in his honor and in his memory, and he is Mayor Emeritus Alex Fiori. I can just share with the community, Alex's wife, widow, Katie, lives in the community, his family, his kids live in the community, they're active members of the community, and one of the things that I'm, as I work on the council and work in the community, that I'm always sometimes disappointed about is that new folks coming into Thousand Oaks, maybe in the last four, five years, 10 years, really are not really aware of the tremendous commitment and tremendous impact that one man had on this community, whether it be oak trees or city services. Alex went above and beyond. It is, and I have to say this, this is a man that for the better part of 30 years, put a card table up at the Jan's Mall and did everything from your tax returns to field your questions about city council. He was the epitome of what a local elective official ought to be, and it's totally appropriate that we adjourn every year in his memory and his honor. And so, I just want to thank Alex for his commitment and his, what he's done for our community, his family. and the hours necessary to make Thousand Oaks, the Canale Valley, what it is. We have some of those folks here today, but I just want everybody to recognize the tremendous effort that the park district, the school district, and the City of Thousand Oaks, in a collaborative way, put into making Thousand Oaks what it is. And so, please give them another round of applause as well. I want to thank the current council. This is my third trip as Mayor. It's always an honor to be Mayor of Thousand Oaks, and it doesn't matter how many times you do it, it's special every time. And folks have heard me say before, being Mayor of Thousand Oaks is really something that your colleagues allow you to do. You don't get elected Mayor of Thousand Oaks, your fellow councilmembers allow you to be Mayor, and it truly is an honor. And so, I want to thank each and every member of the council for allowing me to serve this year as Mayor. I'll do my level best to do as good a job as Mayor Gillette has done in the past year. But I just want to thank the councilmembers, as Mayor this year, for your time, your devotion, and your energy to this community, because I've said it before, and I'm going to, tonight's one of the few nights where we can talk personally and we can talk about what's going on in the community. I need you to know that the five members up here put a tremendous amount of time in, way above the Tuesday nights that you might see on TV, and you need, when you see them in the grocery store, you see them at the track meets, you see them at the football games, you see them throughout the community, you need to go up and you need to shake their hand and you need to tell them thanks. Thanks very much. We have outstanding community staff. I talked a little bit about the former staff, and I want to talk a little bit about City Manager Scott Mitnick and our City Attorney Amy Albano. We have, over the last four years, two new staff members, and some of that has come with some public discussion. But I think what has certainly been shown is that council was very wise in their decision, and has, the community has viewed in on Tuesday nights, and more importantly, has you have used and worked with the city in your respective ways, you have seen that we have outstanding city management and quality city management. City management that will serve our community for many, many years to come, not just the appointed members in terms of the City Manager and the City Attorney, but our department heads. Those are the folks that run the city, those are the folks that provide the services, and I just am so proud of the city staff that we have, and certainly, representative of the entire city staff, please give a round of applause to our City Manager and City Attorney. On the political front, I, you know, this is our reorganization, three of us have been sworn in. I want to thank the many, many volunteers that worked on my campaign. I am so proud of the campaigns that we run. It's been stated that this is my fourth term, and I'm very proud of the campaign that we started back in 1994. I made a pledge to the community that we'd always run positive campaigns. To the best of my knowledge, we have kept that pledge in some very difficult times. And I've always said that if the campaign is successful, it's because of the folks that helped in the campaign. If the campaign is unsuccessful, it's because you had a bad candidate. And so, I just want to thank, and there are so many people, but certainly, some of them are here, I just want to thank you because this was a campaign that could not have been won, it could not have been successful without your help, and I just want to thank each and every person that was involved with the campaign, because I wouldn't be sitting here today without your efforts. Thank you very much. As I wind it up, I want to also thank the community. One of the things about running for reelection every four years, it gives me an opportunity to go out and knock on doors. I really enjoy that. Whether I was talking to the gentleman that lived next to Cal Lutheran, or the lady that lived on Las Flores and was concerned about traffic, the family who was moving out of her house where I actually helped them move a refrigerator, or the lady that had the raccoon in her garage. I really enjoy going out knocking on doors. It gives me a chance to check back in with the everyday Thousand Oaks voter, find out what's important to you, find out what is concerning to you, and I enjoy the opportunity to go out and knock on your door and spend some time listening to what you have to say. This election has been an opportunity for all of us to have a discussion about the issues. It was covered extensively by the press, we had many campaign forums, but more importantly, I think, as has been stated before, as a community, you decided to return all of us, all the incumbents, to the City Council, and I think common sense tells you that, in a general way, you like the direction that the city's going. And so, what I would tell the community is, we intend to continue to pursue the course that we have been charted, from the former councilmembers and staff members to the current councilmembers, to continue to provide world-class services, a world-class community, a community when you come home from work is one of the safest in the country, a community that where your kids go to school is one of the best school districts in the country, a community that when you go out on the weekends and you spend time in our parks and our open space is without parallel, and a community that when you come to the Civic Arts Plaza and many other city services, you experience the type of services and community that you would come to expect from an outstanding community. And so, we can, we're just going to continue on that road, and I just want to thank the entire community for allowing all three of us to return to the City Council. Finally, I want to thank first and foremost, at the end, and I saved it for the end, is my family. Phoebe and Cassie are here tonight, and I just wanted to give them, our oldest daughter Suzie is a senior at Dartmouth, and for the last 12 years, certainly, she's seen the sacrifice of Dad not being home and missing some events. The two boys candidly get bored with these speeches, and that's why they're not here. But Phoebe and Cassie came tonight, they actually came to some of our fundraisers, and, but I, as I've said, certainly about Mayor Gillette, all the councilmembers, certainly Claudia with her two young kids, Jackie has a family, Dennis, Tom, all of us have lives outside the City Council, and I think everybody needs to recognize the effort that all the councilmembers put in and their families with respect to them putting in the time and the energy necessary in order to serve this community, and so, and certainly through the campaign. But Phoebe and all the kids, Daniel, Andrew, Cassie, and Suzie, I love you guys and thanks so much for your support. And finally, on the family note, they're not here tonight, but I have to say a little bit about my mom and dad. This is the first time they haven't been here. They're both under the weather with the flu, and this is the first campaign where my dad hasn't walked precincts with me. And at the risk of embarrassing Tom, he was actually somewhat mistaken for my dad.
I've got beer.
Exactly. Tom's got a lot more here than my dad, but they're both home, I know they're watching tonight, I love you both, and I just thank both my mom and dad for the support, they've been longtime residents of this community, and it wouldn't be the same without recognizing my mom and dad for their efforts. And so, in their absence, please give them a round of applause. I want to just complete with this with, you know, a couple of final thoughts. We really do have a world-class community. As Mayor, my intent is to keep the meetings running smoothly, certainly allow open and a lot of open debate and dialogue with the councilmembers. I want and invite people to come down to the City Council meetings if you have concerns, whether they're critical, constructive, or supportive, we want to hear your concerns. We are very fortunate in this community that we have a citizen, resident, community, family that is not shy about sharing their viewpoints and their perspectives, and that's what makes Thousand Oaks what it is. And so, I want to encourage folks to come down to the council meetings on Tuesday, share your perspectives, stay involved, and we look forward to really a constructive and good, productive new year. Thanks very much. Okay. Now, I'd like to turn it over to our new Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Jackie Irwin.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the council, this is truly an honor to be selected as Mayor Pro Tem, and I will do everything I can to maintain the positive direction that the city has taken. Looking forward to working with all the councilmembers and Mayor Fox, although if that was a brief speech, then I'm concerned about the length of our meetings the next year. I expect that all five of us will continue to work cooperatively over the next year, and we're going to be starting with a goal-setting session in January. We all have, all five of us do have the same goal of making sure that Thousand Oaks stays the special place that it is, and I think that we will see a lot of positive things over the next year. So, thank you very much to the entire council again.
Thank you. Jackie, Councilmember Bill de La Peña?
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, and as well to Jackie Irwin for being selected Mayor Pro Tem. I will take just a few moments to thank everyone who has helped with my campaign, all of the volunteers, without them, I would not be sitting here at all. First and foremost, however, I have to thank my family, my mother, and my husband, and my wonderful two boys, Luca and Dante, and who are also here tonight. And of course, without my family's support, as everybody here knows, without the family's support, it's very difficult to be a councilmember because of the demands that are put upon you. So, the support system has to be there from the family, and I'm very grateful for that. I also would like to thank my colleagues for the last four years, it's been quite a ride, and it's been very insightful, educational, informational, and I also look forward to working with each and every one of you. I do hope that we, I will experience that the council norms which we apply to the public and the councilmembers here publicly will also extend to behind the scenes when we do try to work together. The respect and respecting each other's opinion should also extend behind the scenes. I would very much appreciate that if that will be the case in the new year 2007, and for the next four years as well as the future in general. I think that is very important to do that. And also wanted to, of course, mention, I wouldn't be here tonight if it weren't for the late Edward Masri, as well as former, current supervisor and former Mayor of the City, Linda Parks, and she's in the audience tonight, and I do appreciate all of that you have done, and Edward's family as well. It is very much appreciated, and I'm glad that I, that they were at my side and have been able to help me as well. And again, I really want to thank all the voters from the bottom of my heart for returning me to the dais. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to be your public servant. I will take your input very seriously, as I have during the last four years, I will continue to do the same, and hope to continue to hear from you and be working with all the residents who have concerns, especially with traffic, that seems to be the number one concern, as well as the protection of open space, of course, in the future. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Tom Blancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on being Mayor. I look forward to the year, I know it's going to be exquisite. This past year, I thought, has been remarkable in what we've accomplished and the relative civility with which we've accomplished it, and I look forward only to progress and improvement. I know you're going to do a great job. Councilwoman Irwin? I know you'll continue in the same vein with which you've operated the last two years, and that is leaving the house at 5:00 in the morning and getting home again about 9:00 and time for dinner. You're a very active person, and I know you're going to execute your duties when called upon in a wonderful fashion. So, congratulations to you two. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Councilmember Dennis Gillette?
Has an answering to it. Andy, to you as our incoming Mayor, and with your extended service to the residents of this community, congratulations, and all best wishes for the next year. Jackie, congratulations on Mayor Pro Tem, and look forward to supporting all, both of you, and supporting our other council colleagues. We've, I truly believe that this year, we've turned a corner, and I guess, in a quick summation, with the advice and consent of the residents of the City of Thousand Oaks, and by the grace of God, we'll continue to manage this municipal enterprise in a manner that serves the residents of this community the way they deserve to be served. Thank you very much.
All right, that's all the comments we have. Any public comments that we missed? Going once, twice, three times? Okay. With that, it's my pleasure to adjourn this meeting. We invite everybody to a reception that we have outside, and we will adjourn to the regular City Council meeting of January 9, 2007. Let me wish everyone on behalf of this City Council a happy and safe holiday season and a happy and safe new year. We'll see you in the night.